Today's July 6, 2016. It's 10:00 a.m. Call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. And we also have present our clerk that's doing our minutes for today. Nice to see you, Ms. Blaney. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seven exonerations this morning for 4,504.54. Fiduciary orders from July 6, 2016. Statement of services for fiduciary commissioner Cynthia Van Stafford. First and second quarter status report for Lynn Crane. And an update on the Bill Perry estate. I have been in contact with Kim Weber from the Ethics Commission. She's the one that filed the petition that we talked about last week. She has not returned from vacation yet, so as soon as she gets back, she'll be giving me a call so we can set up a hearing.
The hearing time? Okay.
No minutes for this morning. Vouchers, General County, 323, 426, 38. Nine-one-one cash, 19602. Chestnut Ridge Park, $48. Camp Muffley, $5,086.55. Mason Dixon Park, 11859. Reallocated coal, $22,525. Assessors valuation, 18522. Purchasing card vouchers, $13,129.11. Camp Muffley, 746.78. Mason Dixon Park, 137.65. Assessors valuation, 151.38. For a total of 365.750.68. We have transfers. These are end-of-the-year transfers that we normally perform June 30. The balance of dog tax fund, $70,386.66. Mad magistrate court, $58,099.78. Home confinement, 137.696.98. And payroll interest, 1378.57. All these will be transferred over, or have been transferred over to general fund, 267.555.99. Position vacancies for boards and authorities. One on the Development Authority Historic Landmarks Commission. Four positions open on the Planning Commission. Position expired on June 30 for Pleasant Valley PSD. And also one for the Board of Health. That applicant must reside in the Western Magisterial District and be registered a Democrat or no party. Camp Muffley, Chestnut Ridge Park, and Mason Dixon Park advisory boards.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, introduction of employees. Mr. Zambroni, Anthony Zambroni.
I have to present to you Mr. Dylan Weber. He's part of our roadside litter crew in litter control. And he's been hired a full-time worker. And he starts the salary at 19,000. He'll be eligible for benefits once he completes his six-month probationary period.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Hey, Jamie, could you also just tell the publics that we're about Saturday?
Saturday, we have our recycling, I mean our tire recycling day. It starts at 8 o'clock up at the Walmart off of 4H Camp Road, Grafton Road, behind the New Sheets. And it starts from 8 to 2. And we also have our single stream recycling from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in conjunction with it. So be patient with traffic. There'll be a lot of traffic that day, and just be patient with it. And everything should go fine.
Good.
All right? Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rachel Mitchell, Camp Muffley. Rachel?
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning.
I'm here to present Mr. Alex Ruskin. He is a returning seasonal employee for Camp Muffley. He worked there last year and will be working for us this year as well. Hourly nine thirty.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I guess. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Catherine Ardis, Chestnut Ridge Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Miranda Moser. She's going to be our new lifeguard, our third Chestnut Ridge Park seasonal. Started a week and a half ago. And she will be paid at a rate of $9 an hour for the season.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard. Was there many people swimming on July 4?
I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to talk about it. It was bad.
It was cold.
It was cold and gross.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Blaney, your county clerk.
I'd like to present to you Kyle Hawke. He has been working for our office for several years now. Recently graduated with his master's degree in public administration and recently graduated from law school. We're very proud of him. We're moving him to full-time status effective July 1.
Excellent. Move for approval. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I always thought you were full-time. You were there all the time.
He worked a lot. Law and masters of public administration, same thing. You know, there's always a small group of us still after all these years. When I graduated, there were 17 of us with law and MPA. Now, I understand, there's about 37 or something like that. So you're making 37. You're making 10 years. 10 years, 10 more people. Congratulations.
Well, thank you guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Marcia Estem. Okay, we'll hold on that. Maybe she'll come. Okay, now it's time for comments from the public. Is there any comments from the public? Here in time, some comments from the public. Colin Coon, Grants.
Hi.
Good morning.
I have for the Community Development Block grant from the City of Merton, a funding agreement between M.A.Y.S.P. That's all I have for you to sign today.
Okay. What's the wishes and commission? Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Is this the new grant?
For this.
Could I just see this?
Sure.
Good. I know we're worried about it.
That's one. Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Correspondents. Renetta.
Received a letter from the Montague County Health Department congratulating William Rose, M.D., of the Department of Emergency Medicine, Health Sciences Center. Would you like me to read the letter?
Yes, read the letter, please.
Dear Dr. Rose, Montague County Health Department includes the citizens, including the citizens and visitors to our county, want to express their gratitude for your thoughtful and timely interaction with, in notifying of, excuse me, in notifying us of possible foodborne outbreak on the weekend of June 11. Your astute clinical skills and index of suspicion prompted an early investigation that proved to be a true salmonella outbreak. Due to your well-timed notification to the health department, our epidemiologist was able to initiate an analysis coupled with environmental services field work that quickly ended further outbreak of this, spread of this outbreak. In this day of deferred responsibility, we want to recognize and celebrate the efforts of those who take ownership of their activities and who go above and beyond what is the working norm. Only through these interactions and collegial relations can we get out in front of situations such as this. Therefore, we are recognizing your efforts and including a certificate acknowledging your service to the community and county as a hearer of public health. Your name will be added to our webpage under "Hearers of Public Health." Again, we sincerely want to express our appreciation for your early notification to Montague County Health Department.
That's exceptional. We really appreciate that people step out. What else do we have?
We also have a letter of thanks for the $20,000 award for In Touch and Concerned. Letter from Lisa Maxey.
Read it.
Okay. On behalf of In Touch and Concerned Board of Directors, Staff, and Clients, I would like to thank the County Commission for funding our transportation program with the generous allocation of $20,000 for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Your commitment to helping seniors, adult, disabled, and low-income individuals in our community is sincerely appreciated. Each year, ITAC continues to advance its mission of promoting and assisting an independent lifestyle of the elderly and adults with disabilities by providing essential social services. The increase comes to, as a, the increase comes at a great time of need. The diminishing state and federal funding has made it difficult to continue providing services with needs that continue to grow. With increasing gasoline prices and clientele, we continue to see five to eight new clients each week. It is our mission to eliminate the obstacles for seniors and disabled to access essential life services to maintain a safe and independent lifestyle. With the help of grant funding from supporters such as the Montague County Commission, we will continue to see improvements in our services for the growing need for 88 accessible and affordable transportation. Please contact our office with any questions.
Thank you. What was hanging totally?
Yes. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day will be August 6 from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the MUBS Green Bag Road offices. They're going to collect, well, they're saying that last year's event collected 17,000 pounds of material. And they are requesting $5,000 in support of the event from the County Commission.
We'll have to put it on now. We'll have to look at it, I think. I don't think we're ready to make a commitment on that.
Well, I believe that it was committed last year through the litter control department, if I'm not mistaken.
From a litter control account?
Or was it, I think it may have been through recycling.
It may have been one or the other.
One of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did fund it, we did fund last year to that amount, but I don't think it was directly from the commission. I think it came from one of those two entities.
One of the accounts.
And that's fine if you want to do it through recycling, because that should be, if that's where, I believe that's how we did it last year, but I can't remember.
Well, do you want to wait?
I can find out.
Yeah, let's wait and just put it on the agenda. But that makes more sense.
We'll put it back on, we'll put it on the agenda.
I'll find out what account it was paid from last year.
That makes sense.
That's good. Okay. The next letter I gave you, you don't have to read it. Just sort of summarize the closure that Murray Coal Company has announced.
They are laying off, I didn't get a chance to add these up, but I know from other newspaper articles, they're laying off 4,400 employees in five states. So the Montague County Coal Company, which used to be Blacks Hill, too, that's the letter.
They didn't give us a total. It looked like there was 100 and maybe 100 there.
Yeah. No, just probably more than that.
100 and plus?
Yeah.
They didn't give us a total. They just said one, they gave us a list. But those are indefinite layoffs with them starting on what date?
August. August 29.
And all the layoffs will be completed by what date?
September 11.
So we're going to have another big hit of 100, 100-some people in the Montague County Coal Company mines. They didn't list the specific mines. They just listed the position.
Well, they only notified us of the mine that's located in the county, but I know I know other mines are being affected as well.
Right. Okay, that's sufficient. What else? Do we have anything more in correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
No, I don't.
Any new business?
No.
What about the meeting next week? I know you're having some.
I will be at Reach Camp, yes.
Is there any reason to hold a meeting next week?
I don't have anything on the schedule.
Any objection to, you want to get a motion?
Move to not have a meeting next week, next Wednesday.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. All right. Reports from elected officials. Honored to have our delegate. He's quite esteemed. I would add that Mr. Joe Statler has been truly a fighter for us in Charleston, one that I could always go and sit down and talk to. Really appreciate it. Nice to see you today. Do you have anything for us?
Well, I do. It's going to be some ramblings. I will tell you that I don't know exactly what I wanted, but the one thing I wanted to say was, follow up on what you're saying. Thank you for the kind words. But I appreciate the back and forth that we have between the County Commission and the delegation that's in Charleston. Because I will tell you that as we go forward on legislation and look at it down there, the bills that's coming out, although you read them, sometimes you miss things. It may be small things that will make a big difference. And when you have somebody that's closer in on that, is looking at it and gives us feedback and information, sometimes we can correct that. On the other side, the flip side of it, again, I say I enjoy the working relationship. I will tell you, now's the time. If the County Commission has any request of anything that we need to look at legislatively, if we can do that now and form the bill, we can do it now while they're not as tied up in Charleston with the folks down there that writes the bills. And it makes it a lot easier to do that. And then we have time to bring it back and forth and look at it to see if there's something we need to change even before it's introduced as legislation. Plus, it gives us time to start working with our colleagues down there, saying, listen, this is something we're going to bring forward, and we really need some support on this. Because as you know, the more support that we have on it, the faster we can get it through the system. And it's tough to get any bill through them one year, we'll say that. And it's tough to stop some of them once they've got the ball rolling also. So we can look at those types of things.
We were successful with that. On the last day of the last vote, but we, and I know you were instrumental in helping me on the health side on that.
Well, like I said, it's always helpful when we get those and we have time to even stop them. The big time to correct a lot of that is before it even gets into committee, or at least in committee. It gives us a better shot at getting it corrected than it does once it's starting to move sometimes. And as you guys all know, there's 55 counties. So, you know, everybody sees things a little bit differently, and no matter what, one county wants another county, may not favor that. So you have that balancing act that's out there. But I certainly want to reach out to you and say that if you have anything that you want to bring forward, I for one will work with you. And I will also tell you, as you're well aware, there's an election and we don't know what the outcome, who will be there next year, or who will be the controlling party that's in charge. And that always makes a difference. But I say to people, that really doesn't matter as much in the fact that you can still continue to work. And even, even if I wasn't re-elected, you know, I can still reach out to some people down there to make some comments and talk to them. So I wanted to reach that out to you and make you know that it's better now than later. The faster we can get started on it, the better we're likely to do it.
With respect to that, since you and I both attended the Volunteer Fire and Association meeting, it would be helpful, I think, for you to just elaborate a little bit about what we could do and possibly then get the help of the Association of Counties as well as the Commission Association to put this on their legislative entity and start getting some lobbying efforts down there we have.
Well, and certainly I've reached out to the volunteer fire companies. They don't use their full ability to lobby the way they need to, I will tell you, because everybody has a volunteer fire company in their county. I don't care if it's one or 10 or whatever in each county, and they certainly have a big pull. And we all know how valuable they are. I mean, all you have to do, go to the southern part of the state and see what's going on down there and see the volunteer fire companies and how much are involved and everything that's happening and going on. But as we attended the last meeting, the one thing that I had said probably for the last four to five years, they have legislation that was originally brought out, and I don't know how many years ago, that would allow a surcharge on homeowners' policies and insurance policies. It would have been up to a dollar, and I think it's per hundred, and I'm not sure on my exact number, but I think it was per hundred. Well, at that time, they took .45 of that and used it to shore up the teachers' retirement system and some other things. And since that time, they withdrew that and taken it away. So the original dollar that was out there, they never did do anything with the 45. They just dropped that altogether. And the volunteer fire companies, like I said, that was originally a dollar to go then, they're getting .55. Well, we have a bill that was out there, and by saying we, there are several legislators that's run that bill, and it's not really been able to push forward. But it's something I would like to see the County Commissions and the volunteer fire companies to work toward. And I know we're in a marketplace now that nobody wants to see any fees, taxes, or anything else raised, but we simply must help the volunteer fire companies. Even though they got that levy that just passed this year in Montague County, that's by no ways near going to do what they need. And, you know, there's another concern that we have out there. And passing that, I will tell you that we are going to reintroduce that bill, so it will be reintroduced this year. It's right now, it's not for sure whether Delegate Hamilton out of Upstate County will do it, or whether I will do it in Mon County. But the bill will be reintroduced, and we couldn't get it through committee last year. We did have some meetings. We need to work with the insurance companies. There's just some concerns that we need to work out, so we're working that one along. The other one is workman comp. And I don't know if you guys have really looked into, the way the workman comp situation is set up for volunteer fire companies is they basically, no matter what they do, if they're out here, if they're doing a boot drive, for instance, to try and raise money, if they're having a dinner at their site and their artillery or whoever is working in the kitchen, they have to pay the same amount of money in the workman comp. And it's roughly about $15 an hour. For every time, every volunteer hour that goes out there by these fire companies, they have to pay approximately $15 an hour in the workman comp. So it basically starts once they're called at home, when they leave to go, if it's a car wreck or whatever. Whatever amount of people they send out is roughly what they're having to pay per hour. It's just eating alive. Now, the state does have a fund now that they help bring back some money to help offset those costs. And it did, it would have expired this year at July 1, but we were successful keeping some money into that fund for one more year at least. So there's some things out there that we have to look at. And working with the Speaker of the House, we're trying to look at the workman comp situation and see if there's some way we can put categories in that. So that, as we all know, there's different degrees. I would say that a person that's out there finding a fire in a home is in far more danger than what they are if they're standing out there boot driving.
Boot driving or cooking in the kitchen.
Or working in a kitchen, or you can name any number of things that could be out there, but it doesn't matter. So that is another piece that we're looking at to see if there's some way we can correct that.
Am I right in my understanding that they also have to pay based on the actual jobs that the volunteers have? In other words, if you're a football coach for WVU and you're a volunteer fireman, does that, the benefit, and he gets injured, the benefits they have to pay is based on his actual salary, not what a fireman would normally make? Is that correct? That's the way I, I've heard that discussion before. Do you know?
You may be able to ask that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I was just curious about that.
I will have to say that, Mr. Callen, that I will not be able to answer that altogether.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I would say that I've never heard that before. I never, and quite frankly, I'm not sure how the pay would be if a person is injured as to whether workman comp even pays anything out into it, how, what it's based on. So you brought up a point that I really need to look into to see.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I've heard that before from, in the County Commissioners Association discussions on volunteer fire department laws and stuff. And I never confirmed it. That's why I asked it. I would appreciate if you, my understanding is if you're making $50,000 a year, you get injured as a volunteer, the workman comp is going to pay you based on $50,000. Or if you're making $20,000 on $20,000, if you're making 2.1 million, they're going to pay you based on 2.1 million a day. That's what I heard, but I never confirmed that. But that would certainly run up the cost of, for the risk.
And it would, and I will have to tell you that it only makes sense that we are creatures of being, and whatever we make is what we spend a lot of times. And if a person's out volunteering and get injured and can't do their job, then it doesn't matter. They've got those bills out there for that amount of money.
Yeah.
So that's a very good point that really I've never, never explored and looked into.
But that would certainly run up the cost because of the risk, potential risk.
And I know that we had looked at ways that possibly they could be put into a pool some other ways and possibly even be that, there's a lot of companies out there, you know, there's a law in place that says if they're doing that, then if they're a volunteer fireman and they're called out to go onto a run or a call, they can be excused from work. That is a legitimate excuse. There is some companies out there, by talking to them, that would be willing to assume some of that workman comp also, to let it carry over on that type of volunteer situation, but there's no mechanism to allow that to happen. I'm not saying that would be required, but if somebody certainly wanted to do that, for instance, if the County Commission, you have employees, I'm sure that works for the County Commission, are also volunteer firemen. And if you so chose, then you could probably say, you know, we'll allow our comp to go ahead and carry over on them if there's an avenue of doing that. So those are some of the things we're looking at. It's a real complex issue that's out there, and I'm not sure that it's going to get resolved at any time near soon, looking at it. But as you said, as I come here today, you give me another area that I need to look at that I would really need to talk about.
Well, we appreciate it very much and appreciate your service. I would add also that it's, could be a two-way street, because we're very active, I particularly very active at the national level now as well on legislation. A lot of times, I know, just sitting in our office, talking about different things, we realize that, well, we've got to do something on the federal level before we can do it on the state level. So as those issues come up, please feel free to bring it to this commission as well.
Will do. And I will say that I'm not sure whether it should have been entered a pump of comment, but I did have one other thing that I would like to ask the commission to look into.
Go ahead.
And what it is, at Mason Dixon Park, I spoke to Mr. Hawkins about the flight poles that are in pretty bad shape out there, and that's your main entrance coming in. You've done a lot to improve the main entrance coming into that area out there, and it looks great. And I would like to see that possibly we do something with those flight poles. I would say put new flight poles up there by buying them for the schools and stuff like that. They're expensive, but they're not that expensive.
Yeah, right. Just so you know, that was brought up, I talked to Lori for her to get prices, because I thought that was something that, once she got the price, she'd come to us. And then I had stated that you would look and requested that. So I think the three of us, probably, you know, I don't, I think it's something that clearly needs to be done. Also, you know, before you leave, I mean, I want it very clear that, quote, you know, you're supposedly a Republican, I'm supposedly a Democrat, but never once have we ever had a problem along the lines of any communication. In fact, the exact opposite. I want the public to know how much I appreciate working with you, and we've always, and you've always put Mon County forward, and I look forward to working with you for two more years. I'm very pleased with what we have done and what we're able to do, and I wish that other[1701.63] areas of the state could have that type of relationship.
Well, certainly appreciate that. And I will tell you that I'm not one that stands behind party one way or the other once we get there. I know it should, it, it makes a determination of who's going to be the ruling party and that determines who's going to be the chairs and all that. It does make a difference, don't get me wrong, in where you're at with it. But at the same time, I think we all need to lose that, and when we move forward, we need to do what's best for the citizens of West Virginia and especially in the Montague County as, as we move forward and, and lose the rest of that once we're there. And we work pretty well together, so I hope that continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our county clerk, Ms. Bynne, do you have anything for us? Thank you. Ron, you got anything from Granville?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. All right. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yes. Last evening, I went before the city council as an individual county commissioner, and I'm very glad that the newspaper, I want to thank them for reporting it as did. I do want to hand to you, both of you, my speech and the material. And also, here is the actual West Virginia tax increment financing application, which I picked up yesterday.
I need to review that. That's what I requested.
Yes, yes. I'm not going to go through bore you with a number of the details, but I do want a couple highlights that I believe are important. As you're aware, I wanted to clarify, I said I was incorrect, that we hadn't received the letter from the city manager. We did get a letter that was dated and sent supposedly June 7th, but I do want you to see, and this is the original, we received it on June 21st, two weeks later on the day of the hearing.
That has to do with the postal service. I have that happen all the time.
And that happened. So that's where the clarification confusion was. Also, just some concerns, and people were saying, well, why was I that concerned about a TIF inside the city and we're a county? And as you know, we are in charge of, of the levy and body and, you know, how we receive our income through property tax. And we have eight TIFs in this county now. And when I started to ask some questions of the major parties involved with this TIF, they all gave different answers. And that put up a red flag. So I started, I, that's when I went through this thing, and I look forward to you all reading it too. But there's some questions and concerns that come up, such as, and I will say Bill Rice did an excellent job last night, he was concerned about the MMPO's short and long-range plans. And it was very clear that no one had talked with MP, MMPO or the plans about this road that's going to let 320 cars below the roundabout. The second concern was that we were under the impression that it's low-income housing. No, it isn't, and they admit that it isn't. However, there are portions of it that are low-income housing. So I went to the assessors to make sure that it's being taxed the same way, and I had learned that, no, if it's government-subsidized housing, it is a different methodology. So therefore, if they're using the TIF at 100% and a different methodology may be used, and that's the question, may, we don't know, it could be only 10% of what they really think they're getting. And, you know, there were some other general concerns. I did forward an invitation to Mr. Marty's and their attorney to come before us, and I gave them three dates that Renetta said could possibly, they could possibly come. They were supposed to get back to us, because I wanted them to come before us to answer some of these questions. They did admit also that it's a non-taxable land item now. They would then sell it to a developer who would then develop the property. And my question was to them, then what is the difference between that and a public-private deal developing a student housing with WVU? So there are a number of general questions, and I will end it by this. When they voted, one of the council members made it very clear. They said, well, let's push this forward and we will worry about the details later. And that's really where we're at. Thank you.
Have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Well, as stated before, next week is 4-H Camp. I'll be at camp monthly. I do want to extend an invitation to anybody who might want to stop by at a, at a council circle to see a wonderful group of individuals, not only just volunteers, but the, the campers themselves, and including, I would like to see both commissioners come up and view the park in being used. Okay? Thursday night is final council circle, so roughly around 6 o'clock, come on up and informally have a good time. The July 4th celebration unfortunately didn't quite go as well as planned, so we are going to be working in conjunction with the Fair Board and the Celebration of America so that the program could be still held during the fair week, whether it's going to be in the parade or whether on the fairgrounds, we have yet to decide. But meetings are, you know, are going, the Fair Board will meet on Monday, and then they'll get in touch with the Celebration of America Committee. So should be able to work that out. And Friday, I'll be attending the CVB meeting. Brian Helmick is going to lead a discussion relative to the, the new law that, that has a 30-day exemption taken away on the, on the hotel motel tax, as well as, he, he is the authority on this, on this entity. So at 11 o'clock, I'll be there to represent commission.
Thank you. We appreciate that. About the only thing I have is just to follow up of what Ed said. The, it was a hard thing. I've, I've been involved for over 11 years with the Celebration of America Committee, but Jimmy Smith and I talked to him, we talked with the National Weather Service, and on the 4th of July, at noon, there was 100% chance of rain between 4 and 8, and a 50% chance of thunder and lightning. The rain did, never concerned us in the past. We've had parades in the rain before, but with a 1 and 2 chance of someone being struck by lightning, sitting out here on metal chairs or holding up umbrellas or setting, setting cars, it was, it was just too great of a risk. So I, I did reach out to Commissioner Hawkins and ask him if we could have the celebration honor, honoris ceremony during the, during the, yeah, fair, which is a logical place to have it. So I appreciate, I appreciate his quick response to that and him working on that as he's already reported. Other than that, that's, that's all I have right now. Anything further? Motion to adjourn.
Move to.
Go ahead.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.